Good evening and welcome to Latrobe City Council Meeting which is being held tonight at the Gibbsland Performing Arts Centre. Tonight's meeting will be held with guests and councillors joining us in person. I'm pleased to welcome Deputy Mayor, Councillor Sharon Gibson, Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Lund, Councillor Howe, Councillor Barnes and Councillor Campbell. We also welcome our CEO for Latrobe City, Mr Stephen Piazanti, and our executive team. We'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting here today on the traditional land of the Braakalung people, of the Gunai Kernai nation, and pay our respects to their elders, past and present. And if there are any other elders present, we'd also like to acknowledge them. We now move on to some housekeeping matters. We conduct our meetings under the governance rules currently in place. We welcome all members of the public attending, both via the live stream and in person. I thank you for respecting the protocols of the meeting, which ensure that we can extend the appropriate courtesy and respect throughout the meeting tonight. If councillors could ensure that they raise their hands if they wish to speak, so I can see it, remain seated to speak directly into the microphone to ensure that they can be heard within the room and via the live stream, and when voting, raise their hands and leave them raised until I've called their name. As we now move on to apologies and leaves of absence, and we have all councillors in here, any leave of absence requests councillors? No, so no apologies and no leave of absences. Now move on to item agenda number three, adoption of minutes for the council meeting. I note you, Councillor Gibson, for the meeting held on the 6th of October 2025, and the unscheduled council meeting held on the 14th of October 2025, commencing on page four of tonight's agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Happy to move.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a seconda? Councillor Campbell? Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak? No. Councillor Pugsley, do you wish to speak? Oh, sorry, Councillor Campbell, Councillor Campbell, no, all good. Does any other councillor wish to speak? No, okay, councillors, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on to declarations of interest. Councillors, do I have anybody with a declaration of interest? Councillor Gibson, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Fifteen point one, B and C please.
Part B and C. Councillor Campbell, Councillor Potter, then Councillor Pugsley. Yep?
Me?
Yep, Councillor Campbell.
Fifteen point one D.
Fifteen point one, part D. Yep, Councillor Potter.
Fifteen point one E.
Part E. And Councillor Pugsley.
Also fifteen point one, part B.
Part B. Okay, thank you, councillors. Any other conflicts of interest, councillors? No, perfect. We now move on to acknowledgements, and I note, Councillor Potter, you wish to make an acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think there's a bit of feedback happening.
Yeah. They're onto it, good.
Lovely. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge the Balarra Folk Festival, which after 22 years has now come to an end. I was lucky enough to attend their final AGM about two weeks ago. So, a great moment to celebrate 22 years of outstanding achievement, but also a sad time as well. So, for more than two decades, this much-loved event has brought the community together, attracting over 10,000 visitors when it was held over the weekend, and contributed more than $2 million to the local economy. So, it stands as a testament to the dedication and the passion of many volunteers who have made it possible each year. In fact, it took about 80 of the community to come together to volunteer to just run everything. So, in particular, I'd like to recognise Ray and Wendy Stewart, who developed the original concept and inspired the community to get behind it, and Rick and the committee, who continued on that tradition once Ray stood back after 14 years. And although we say goodbye to the Folk Festival, Balarra will still continue to be the home of music. The committee has now transitioned into the Balarra Music Project, which is nearing completion of the old Balarra post office as a live music venue, and it's planning lots of new opportunities for local artists and music lovers to come together. So, I wish them every success as they carry forward the musical spirit that was the Balarra Folk Festival.
Yep, and second one, Councillor Potter.
Second one. I'd like to acknowledge Linda Reid for her outstanding contribution to hockey in Latrobe Valley across Gibbsland. Linda has recently been recognised for 50 years of service to the sport. An extraordinary milestone that reflects her lifelong dedication and leadership. So, over the decades, Linda has contributed in countless ways, from being a player, committee member, president secretary, and in many, many other roles. She's been the driving force behind the establishment of the Latrobe Valley Hockey Association, which operates out of the Hockey Centre in Churchill. Through her vision and persistence, she brought together multiple clubs to create a shared regional facility that benefits the entire hockey community. So, I had the pleasure of attending the Gibbsland Junior Championships last weekend, and it was clear from the skill and enthusiasm on display that hockey in our region is in very good hands. A testament to the foundations laid by Linda and those she has inspired. So, I'd like to congratulate Linda Reid for her remarkable contribution and enduring legacy to hockey in Gibbsland.
Thank you, Councillor Potter. Councillors, do we have any other acknowledgements? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just quickly, two please. One was the Knitted Knockers fundraiser. Now, Jen does a brilliant job with that, and for anyone who has had breast cancer or has to have mastectomy, the service they provide is brilliant. And she runs a fundraiser each year and raises a lot of money and helps for women who have sadly had a mastectomy for one reason or another. And the other one I'd like to acknowledge was Gibbsland Rotary Centenary House. We went to their fundraiser a couple of weeks ago, and again, it's another community organisation who does such a lot for our community, so I think they should be thanked for what they do to the community and...
Thanks, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? No, thank you for that. I'm going to move back to item four because we went through everyone's conflict with item 15.1 except mine, so I'll declare an interest at 15.1, part F. Thanks, councillors. We now move on to public participation. The next item is the public participation where we hear from the community. Mr CEO, did we have any public questions?
No public questions for tonight's meeting, councillors, Mr Mayor.
And any public speakers?
No public speakers either for tonight's meeting.
Perfect, thank you, Mr CEO. We now move on to item seven, notices of motion. First item up, there's two items. The first one up is 7.1, deferring the election of the mayor and deputy mayor, commencing on page six of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Pugsley, do I have a seconda? Councillor Lund, do I have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is just procedural, just to make sure that we have the most available councillors for this important election. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Lund, did you wish to speak?
Just to reinforce what my council colleague has said, that we want to ensure that everyone can be at the table for this very, very important meeting.
Yep, thank you. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? No, okay, councillors, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 7.2, Latrobe City Bus Network Review, commencing on page seven of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Morgan, I note you moving. Councillor Campbell, seconding. Yep. So, bear with me. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor.
Yep.
So, I've put this motion forward because the Latrobe City Bus Network is currently inadequate for public using the network. Following the completion of the Gibbsland line upgrades that has just happened, there was a subsequent bus timetable review. However, that has not changed much for a large part of our community. There are so many residents in Latrobe City who have issues with the limited frequency of bus services, the inadequate coverage, the unreliable schedules, the lack of accessibility, which all impact their ability to utilise the bus services and effectively commute on them. So, many of my fellow councillors will now be aware of the perplexing bus timetable that the good people of Yulaw North and Tyres are subjected to. But for those who might not be, say you live in Yulaw North and work a nine-to-five job in Terrelegan. One day, you need to catch a bus to work. Well, your work finishes at 5pm. That's too bad, because the last bus that goes through to Yulaw North left at 4:47pm on a weekday. And you want to get to work? Well, you're going to get into Terrelegan about 8:05. Enjoy that hour before you start work. If you live in Tyres, say, and work in Moi, well, you can either catch the 3:30pm bus home or catch the 5:30pm bus, but that terminates in Yulaw North. So, enjoy your two-and-a-half-hour walk to Tyres from Yulaw North. We deserve a public transport network that meets the needs of our community and is there for the people who most need it and the people who want to utilise the service. There is and has been for a very long time a need for more frequent bus services, improved reliability and better connectivity to services, activity centres and rail connections across Latrobe City. The network also needs to be accessible. I don't know about you, but the amount of people I've seen crouching next to a bus stop in the pouring rain or wind is not okay. We want people to utilise our bus services, they can't, because it is a miserable experience. So, this motion at its core is about updating the network, so everyone who wants to or needs to use a bus can, and they can do so with dignity, with accessibility, so it is an easy and pleasant experience. So, I thoroughly ask you all, please, vote for this, because we need an upgrade, we need an entire network reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak?
Through you, Mr Chair, I agree with everything that my fellow councillor has said, and also it needs to be reviewed too, because we've got so many new houses and estates coming up everywhere, and I don't think the buses have been updated enough for travel, and we've got a growing population, so I hear what you say, Steph.
Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Howe, then Councillor Gibson?
Most of what I was going to say has been said. In particular, the new estates is a great point. We've got all these new estates and people have to actually walk from their new estate, you know, for half an hour or more just to get to a bus stop. Often, it's on one of the major roads that hasn't got adequate footpaths either, so needs to be looked at. We're a very unique city. We've got three, four major towns, several smaller towns, and we need to have a comprehensive and well-connected transport network to enable all our community to be able to use it. I think it's very much of a case, build it and they will come. If you wanted a community to use the bus and our public transport network, it must be designed and tailored for their needs, so we need to speak with the community, find out where the gaps are, and then try and improve it for them. So, 100% behind this one. Well done, Councillor Morgan.
Thanks, Councillor Howe. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I do agree with what my fellow councillors have said, there's some other gaps too. Anyone wishing, especially elderly, who need to go to the consultation rooms at the hospital, they can't get there. They can't walk that far from the bus stop, so that's a real issue. And also people in New Borough, you've got to go into Moi to come back out, so there are some gaps. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a... Councillor Pugsley?
I'm for the motion as well. I'd like to just relay everything, well, I agree with everything that my fellow councillors have been saying, and I was stunned when I looked at the new timetable and found out that Yulaw North had nothing better to offer than what it previously had offered. And it is a real ongoing problem, because you see on the community notice boards that people are calling out for anybody going to Terrelegan or into Moi at certain times, can they get a lift with them? Now, that's great community spirit that people do offer them a lift, but the women are putting themselves in danger, or anybody's putting themselves in danger by having to ask someone that they don't know for a lift, because of the gaps in the timetable. The new timetable for the buses, I do acknowledge that there have been some changes, and some changes, we do have some more frequent buses in from the number one bus, but it's simply not good enough for the other local buses, that all the buses, I'm hearing from my older residents, that all of the buses now, when they used to have the choice between a number one bus to get home, number 14 or a number 15, they all leave within a minute of each other, so it's no good. The option is the one option. My elderly residents are also finding the times, trying to work out what time the buses are going, it's not, you can't time it, you don't know. It's, what is it, 40-minute frequency or something like that? But it's not on the hour, or it's not, it's all over the place. So, I think they need to reform that as well as putting on some extra services for, like Yulaw North, the top of Moi. The top of Moi, their services have gotten worse, not better. The timing is worse. So, I fully support this motion.
Thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We now move, I note you, Councillor Morgan, I note you, Councillor Howe. We now move on to strategic items. In item eight, there are seven items in this section. The first item is 8.1 Advocacy Framework, commencing on page nine of the agenda. Councillor Morgan, I noted you.
I'd like to move the motion, please.
Moving, and Councillor Howe?
I was hoping to move it as well, but I'll be happy to second it.
Second it, perfect, thank you for that. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Advocacy is an important function of council. Through advocacy, we're able to elevate community interests and put the municipality's needs in front of decision-makers and those with influence, in order to effect change, secure funding and deliver positive outcomes and advance our strategic priorities. It's vital to what we do. However, we currently don't have a formalised approach for defining councils' advocacy processes. This limits our ability to effectively and efficiently advocate for the municipality and puts us at risk of missing out on opportunities. The proposed advocacy framework, 2025-2030, presented to us tonight, looks to remedy these issues, and I just want to thank the council officers involved for creating such a thorough document. By endorsing this framework, we will be providing council with a clearly defined process and methodology for identifying, prioritising and delivering advocacy initiatives, both proactively and reactively. These changes will put us in line with best practice. It will help us differentiate between proactive and reactive advocacy opportunities, so we can facilitate more timely responses to emergent issues in the community without it disrupting the focus on our long-term priorities. We'll also see, provide a structured framework that clearly outlines responsibilities and accountability within the organisation, and allow our advocacy teams to better focus their efforts and resources in our advocacy work. I believe that by adopting a formalised advocacy framework, sorry, I believe that adopting a formalised advocacy framework is critical, especially as we're facing the transition of industry and identity here in the Latrobe Valley. With a more strategic, coordinated and consistent approach, we'll be able to maximise the impact of our advocacy efforts and strengthen our ability to deliver for the community now and long into the future. It's also a more transparent way of showing the community that this is how we will prioritise what we're advocating for and why, so I think it gives people a better understanding and better security in knowing how we're doing things. So, I thoroughly recommend this motion and hope you will all support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Pretty much ticked everything that I had speaking as she spoke, so happy just to support it at this stage, thank you.
No, thanks, Councillor Howe. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I won't do it for long. Just, I'm more than happy to support this, because you and I had a trial run, if you like, when we went to federal government and the state government with this type of framework. And it's because of that that I'm in agreement with this, because the planning took months of planning, and the time allocation and the budget allocation has to be factored in, so I'm more than happy to support it.
Yep, thanks, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Councillor Pugsley?
Just briefly, through you, Mr Mayor. I support this item, as it is a smart policy to ensure that we're implementing the right strategies in a timely manner to advocate better for our community. Some of the improvements are an annual call-out, tiers of impact and prioritisation toolkit to guide in decision-making. It establishes a structured and transparent process, which is really important and will help us to better advocate in a timely manner. I'm confident that this framework will improve our advocacy outcomes. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any other councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on, note you, Councillor Gibson. We now move on to item 8.2, Annual Report 2025, commencing on page 48 of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you. Councillor Lund, I note you. Councillor Gibson?
Like to move it, please.
Yep, moving, Councillor Lund. Seconding, Councillor Lund, seconding. Do I have any opposition, councillors? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Not for this one. Sorry. Look, I'd just like to bring people's attention to what's actually in the annual report and what we actually do. In the report, you'll see that we have 78,845 people who live in Latrobe City, and population by age, 61% is 15 to 64 years old, whereas it's always been said we're an ageing population, but the oldies, if you like, that's only 21%. Now, if you look at this, it'll also tell you about who occupies private dwellings. We have 25 early education centres that we deal with. We have five maternal and child health centres. We have three specialist schools. We have 28 primary schools, four libraries. We have six senior citizen centres, and it goes on and on, including eight skate parks. Now, some of the interesting parts of, well, I thought was interesting, maybe others may not, is that we had 258,590 metres squared of local roads resealed in the last year, and we had 325,657 aquatic facility centre visits. Now, we could go on and on and on, but I won't. So, I would encourage people to have a look, because it's much more than what they think that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So, I'm happy to support this as well. So, it is, the report is available on our, or will be available on our website, and also includes our audited financials in our performance statement. The report gives our community a clear picture of what we've achieved over the past year and how we've managed our finances, delivered our services and worked towards the goals set out in our council plan. It tells the story of what's been done, how we've done it and how we're tracking against the key performance measures set by Local Government Performance Reporting Framework. These indicators cover things like community satisfaction, service delivery, governance and financial sustainability, and they help us make sure that we're staying on track and continuing to improve. It's a great overview of the breadth of work that is covered across Latrobe. And finally, sorry, I was just going to refer you to the website, but I've already done that. Finally, I just want to acknowledge all the staff that bring this together, but not only the staff, the volunteers and the community partners, for the huge effort that go into making all of these outcomes possible, because we can't do it if we're not all working together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on to item 8.3, I note you, Councillor Pugsley. 8.3 Asset Management, or the Asset Plan 2025, note you, Councillor Lund. 2535, commencing on page 185 of the agenda. Councillor Pugsley, I noted you.
I'd like to move this, please.
Moving, and Councillor Lund, noted you.
Happy to second.
Happy to second, perfect, thank you. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. Under this policy or this asset plan is a requirement under the Local Government Act of 2020. We are required to adopt an asset plan by October 31st in the year following our council election. This document outlines the status of council's infrastructure, asset portfolio, including the state of each asset and the funding that needs to be allocated. This plan has had the community consultation period and is now ready to be officially passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Oh, Councillor Pugsley has covered what I've written down, but I guess what it allowed is, it also compares the required renewal funding against what's actually available. add is it also compares the required renewal funding against what's actually available. And as the report highlights, there's a significant shortfall between the two over the 10-year period. This shortfall is not unique to Latrobe. It's a challenge faced by councils right across Victoria and balancing community expectations with limited financial resources requires difficult decisions about priorities, timing and what we can realistically deliver. Community submissions have been considered, I think you did say that, sorry. And I want to thank everybody that did contribute to that. It certainly helps us come to our final documentation and I'm really happy to adopt this to have the final plan made publicly available.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. Councillor Potter, sorry. I was going to ask you how you were voting, I don't need to. Councillors, those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor How, councillor Campbell, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Councillor How, I note you. Councillor Potter, I note you. We now move on councillors to item 8.4, Financial Plan 2025-35 commencing on page 224. Councillor How, I noted you.
Yeah, hoping to move, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Yep, and councillor Potter?
Love to second it, please, Mr Mayor.
No worries. Councillors, do we have any opposition? Councillor How, would you like to speak?
Well, till my age, I get a bit old trying to move these things with the young generation's taking over. Okay, yes, yeah, the draft financial plan, which was endorsed at our August meeting is to be presented, sorry, was endorsed at our August meeting to be presented to the committee for feedback. It's now come back to be endorsed by us. This outlines a 10-year financial projection, identifying the resources required to deliver on our council plan, our community vision and our other key strategic priorities. This includes an annual cash flow forecast and key assumptions that underpin both service delivery and infrastructure investment. Council received only one community submission, so they must be pretty happy with what we presented to them. But when you do look at it, there is a major concern from the risk assessment, which highlights a high risk relating to our service delivery. The plan makes it clear that council cannot sustainably continue to provide existing services at current levels and maintain existing infrastructure into the future. This means that difficult decisions will need to be made in the coming years to ensure financial sustainability. Council applies the Victorian Order of General's Office Financial Substantial Indicators as a guide to monitor our long-term financial health. Currently, there are two ratios that if left unaddressed, could impact the sustainability, our future sustainability of council. That's the adjusted underlying result and the capital replacement ratio. You can both see these, they are in the report. These indicators reinforce the need for prudent financial management and strategic decision-making to ensure that our council remains financially sustainable in the long term. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor How. Councillor Potter, would you like to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor How spoke most eloquently.
I took you a few notes while we had dinner before.
Councillors, do I have a speaker in opposition? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor How, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item 8.5, Road Management Plan 2529 commencing on page 289. Councillor Gibson, I note you. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor, and councillor Pugsley? Yep, councillor Gibson.
Moving, please.
Moving, yep, and councillor Pugsley?
Seconding, please.
Seconding, okay. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Just quickly, please. It is really, really important you have a road management plan. As you heard previously about, we had over quarter of a million square metres of road sealing we did last year. But if you actually look at the plan, it goes into all the hierarchy for urban rural roads, but it goes into much more. You've got your car park hierarchy, you have the footpaths, you have the inspection requirements, the curbside requirements, you have our dreaded footpaths and also the inspection requirements. Now, some of the roads have to be, and I'll get it up, done every 48 hours. So one might say that it'd be lovely if Regional Roads Victoria did the same and acted upon them because we also have when it has to be dealt with, whatever the problem is. And it depends on the hierarchy of the road as to how long a timeframe you have to actually address the problem. So if people are interested in that, it's different to what you would think, but I won't go into all of them now. Just if people are interested, go and have a look.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Just quickly, I'd like to acknowledge that this plan is a very comprehensive plan and officers have taken into account templates that are available to actually make our plan better. There has been a considerable amount of work that our officers have put into this and I would like to acknowledge that how well they have done on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillor How?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just one thing I'd like to add is during the community consultation period, the Have Your Say platform recorded 31-page views and the document was downloaded 18 times, but there were no community submissions received. So that suggests that overall they were happy with the document and the contents of it. So as a result, there was no change in the plan. The community's happy with what we're doing, so keep up the good work.
Yep, thanks councillor How. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor How, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on to item 8.6, Economic. Note you councillor Lund. Economic Development Strategy for Public Consultation. Note you councillor Gibson. Councillor Lund, are you moving?
Yes.
Yep. Laughing, and councillor Gibson, are you seconding?
Yes, please.
Okay, councillors, do I have any opposition? Note councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the recommendation before council is to release the draft strategy for a four-week community consultation period, giving local businesses, industry and residents the chance to provide feedback before the final version is adopted. The strategy sets out a bold, forward-looking roadmap to transform Latrobe's economy, to protect what makes us strong today and to prepare us for what's next. It's about building confidence and supporting local businesses and attracting new investment and creating jobs for the future. What else have I got here? The strategy is built around three key themes, each driven by clear and bold directions, protecting the fundamentals, strengthening and sustaining our core industries and community assets, leveraging our strengths, using what we already do well to attract new opportunities and partnerships and reinventing our fundamentals, embracing innovation and new industries that will transform Latrobe's economy base for the long term. So I would encourage my fellow councillors to adopt this and I will hand over to councillor Gibson in the interest of saving time.
Thanks councillor Lund. Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Just quickly, please. I agree with what my fellow councillors just said and this is really important for people to have a look at because we all know we have to diversify our economy. So have a look and have your say in the benefits of time, that'll do.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker in opposition? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor? Councillor Campbell?
Quick one?
Yeah.
Just in the report, it's got the public transport constraints, so it's important that people have their say. It also has gaps in training, we're discussed, so if we can build and work together, then we'll have a very, very strong economy. So I just hope that the public can have a look at it and I'd just like to say, we've got the right person in the economic development team, we've got the right people, they're working very hard and very well at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Campbell. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? In that case, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor How, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to our next item, item 8.7. Councillor Morgan, councillor Lund and then councillor Pugsley. Hang on, Morgan, Pugsley, bear with me councillors. Latrobe City Council's Submission to the Department of Energy, Environment and Climate Action Consultation for Potential Water Access for Latrobe Coal Mine Rehabilitation commencing on page 340. Councillor Morgan, I noted you first.
I'd like to move the motion, please.
Move the motion. Councillor Lund, I noted you second.
I'll second.
And councillor Pugsley, I noted you third. You'll just speak?
I'll third it.
Third it, done, perfect. Councillors, do we have any opposition? No, good. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. This motion seeks to endorse council's submission to the DCA consultation for potential water access to Latrobe Coal Mine Rehabilitation and approve the views that we have submitted in our submission for future advocacy work. Currently, with all of the mine rehab plans for the Latrobe Valley looking to fill the mine voids with water, it's imperative that we, as council, have a say on this outcome and its potential impact on the municipality. The submission that we provided to this consultation looked at, sorry, we explored, looking at and advocating for further research into the impacts of using water to fill the mine voids. What is the economic outcome for the community? What is the environmental outcome for the community to use this resource? We also looked at with the potential bulk water usage charges being explored, it was our position that any revenue that would be made, should that be in place, should be redirected into an economic support package to support the Latrobe City economy. It was also our view through this submission that further research needed to be put into the cumulative impacts of using water. So I think it's a very thorough submission that was made and I think we are in a very good place to endorse this now and into the future for our advocacy work. So I'm very happy to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The rehabilitation of these mine sites is one of the most significant environmental and economic challenges facing our region. So getting it right is crucial, not just for our environment, not just for environmental safety and stability, but for the future use of the land and the long-term wellbeing of our community. This submission provides council's position and feedback on the potential options being explored for mine water access and management. It reflects our commitment to ensuring that any water use associated with mine rehabilitation is sustainable, transparent and equitable and that it does not negatively impact local communities, the environment or future water security across the region. The submission also reinforces that decisions about water allocation must be considered, including, must be considered, oh, sorry.
You're all right councillor Lund, you're all right?
Please, in my place. The submission also reinforces that decisions about water allocation must consider community and environmental needs first and the importance of long-term planning and accountability and the role of local input in shaping rehabilitation outcomes. Council's submission was developed following careful consideration of community views and regional priorities. It highlights the needs for ongoing consultation and collaboration between government, industry and traditional owners and the Latrobe Valley community to ensure rehabilitation delivers safe, stable and productive outcomes for the valley. If endorsed tonight, this submission will be forwarded to DCA for consideration as part of their formal consultation as well and it's a crucial opportunity to add our voice to shape decisions that will impact the valley for generations to come.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillor Pugsley, I take it you want to speak as well?
Well, just really quickly because it's already been covered by the ladies either side of me. I'd just like to say that this is a smart strategy and I really urge my fellow councillors to vote in favour of this item. It's got some, I think, some out-of-box thinking, especially with advocating for some of the monies from the water levies or whatever they want to call it, coming directly back to us who are going to be affected. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillor, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor How, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. Thank you councillors. We now move, I note you councillor Pugsley, I note you councillor Gibson. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is next, item nine, Statutory Planning. There's one item in this section. The item is 9.1, Proposed Planning Scheme Amendment C152, which relates to 5483 and 5495 Princess Highway to Trelgyn, Consideration of Authorisation commencing on page 351 of the agenda. Councillor Pugsley, I noted you.
I actually have an alternative motion, Mr Mayor, that has been previously circulated.
Yep, we've got that brought up. I'll give councillors a time. Now, we need councillor Pugsley to read that, don't we, Mr CEO?
I'd suggest, Mr Mayor, that highlighting the primary differences, I think most of the motion remains the same from points one B to through to four.
Yep.
From memory, is that correct, Mr Riordan? Yep, just nodding at me. So I think, yeah, one, one B, two, three and four remain the same.
Yep.
It's only the modification to A.
If you could just read out section A for us.
Oh, sorry, two is different, so I didn't.
Sorry, two is different. If you could read out section one A.
Thank you.
And two for us, please councillor Pugsley, the two highlighted sections.
Thank you. I'm glad I don't have to read it all. I propose the difference is that section A, update the planning report and relevant amendment documents to include a floor area shop cap of 3,500 square metres in the schedule to the commercial one zone. And number two, which is different, notes that the proposed commercial one zone land is approximately 1.85 hectares in area. Thank you.
Yep, thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillor Gibson, I noted you second.
Seconding, please.
Happy to second, okay, bear with me. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor How, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Potter, bear with me. Yep, okay, councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Thank you, yes. I note that there has been some discussion between officers as to the best size of commercial space to be recommended for this development and I do note that too little and it will discourage residential growth. I feel that officers have chosen a conservative size for the commercial development. I feel that by providing a larger commercial area right from the start, it will improve the local neighbourhood amenity. It will also help to supply more local jobs in the precinct, which I believe will come to about 30 jobs in the precinct. I believe that this commercial zone will not only serve the new population that will be forming, but will also be more convenient for existing developments like Erin Park, which is estimated to have a population of approximately 360 already, whilst also servicing the nearby zones like the hospital and caravan parks and the visitors as well as their staff, as well as the staff at the nearby airport. It is my opinion that if the developer attracts the right businesses to the retail area, it will complement already existing businesses while also having the effect of cutting down congestion in the Trelgyn CBD, make it more attractive and easier for both residents and visitors by minimising traffic congestion. I'd like to conclude that there have been already precedents set in prior council terms. For example, the Trelgyn West, where they have chosen to go with a larger commercial zone, so this movement would not be unprecedented.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Reserve, please.
Reserve, okay. Councillor How, you opposed?
I did, thanks, Mr Mayor. Through you, please. I do have some genuine concerns about going against the officer's recommendation in relation to this planning scheme amendment. The economic impact assessment prepared for the amendment supports a maximum of 1,200 square metres of retail floor space. Based on the analysis comparable developers, this equates to approximately 4,800 square metres of land. In addition, there is an existing approved planning permit for a service station requiring 9,000 square metres. This service station has not yet been This service station has not yet been developed and there's a real risk to council in rezoning this area to commercial 1 zone before that development has commenced. Council officers have therefore recommended that, before lodging the authorisation request with the Minister for Planning, the application be updated to reduce the land area to 1.38 hectares. This reduction will help ensure the amendment does not have any detrimental effects on existing centres such as the Trelgan CBD, the Moorwell CBD and Mid Valley. While we have a responsibility to encourage and support new economic activity, we must do it responsibly and not at the expense of existing businesses within our municipality. Beyond the economic risk, there's also a reputational risk if the Minister for Planning either authorises the amendment with conditions or rejects it outright. The economic impact statement clearly indicates that a residential development of this scale, approximately 640 lots, only warrants a commercial component of around 1.38 hectares. A smaller supermarket such as an IGA-style store of around 600 to 800 square metres could be justified in this context, but the site would not be suitable for a full-line major supermarket such as a Coles or a Woolworths. In the longer term, once the Trelgan precinct is more fully developed, potentially exceeding 3,000 dwellings, a commercial footprint of around 1.8 hectares is appropriate. However, that level of development is likely many years away. It's also worth remembering that the council previously rejected the full Trelgan West precinct proposal and the current amendment before us tonight represents a smaller version of that original concept. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor Howe. Councillor Morgan?
I'd like to speak against this, yes?
Yeah, yep.
Excellent. I do not believe that there is any strategic justification for this alternate motion. Going from 1,000 to 12,000 to 12,000 square metres, all the way up to 3,500 square metres is a massive jump and it changes the character of what that new zone would be. My major concerns are that being located between Trelgan and Moorwell with no other flow-on from any other communities, it is going to take away from the commercial districts that already exist within Trelgan and Moorwell. We know that Moorwell is already struggling, very much so, in terms of commercial buildings and precincts. I fear that this would be another Mid Valley situation where yet again, people will be taken out of the CBDs, the thriving CBDs like Trelgan, where there are so many wonderful shops and we are going to take away from that for no reason, absolutely none. There is not going to be a population that exists in the Trelgan West development that needs a 3,500 square metre a commercial building. Just no, no reason to have that. In regards to developments like Trelgan North, where there is a commercial development and a supermarket there, it has the benefit of flow-on population from Glengarry, Flynn and other areas outside of Trelgan. It is not stuck between two already fully functioning commercial zones within two towns. In my opinion, this is poor planning, it's poor governance and it does not give the best outcomes for the community and it is robbing our commercial businesses in both Trelgan and Moorwell and I am not okay with that. So, I would encourage everyone to vote against this alternate motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillor Lund, yep?
Thank you, I will be speaking against as well. So, I want to be clear about what's being proposed here. This alternate motion allows floor caps almost three times higher than what was recommended by the independent economic assessment. The applicant only asked for 1,200 square metres and this motion seeks to more than triple that with no evidence, no strategic justification and no sound planning basis to it. That's not good planning, that is ignoring independent advice and undermining the very process designed to protect fair and transparent decision-making. When councillors start changing planning controls here in the chamber and on the floor with our process, we cross a dangerous line. We seek, we risk undoing years of strategic work and setting a precedent that planning outcomes can be rewritten through influence and not evidence and that kind of approach erodes public trust. This proposal is also out of sequence with the orderly development of Trelgan West and that is a direct result of the decision made in this chamber in December last year. Because of that decision, this land now sits outside the planned growth structure. It stands alone, fragmented and inconsistent with the strategy we've already endorsed. We've worked too hard for too long to build a coordinated and evidence-based planning framework and this motion cuts through it. It risks pulling trade and investment away from our existing activity centres, weakening the very areas we have invested in and committed to strengthening. We should be upholding strategic integrity, not rewriting the rules to suit a single parcel of land. Planning decisions must be evidence-based, transparent and consistent or we'd risk losing the credibility of the whole system. This alternate motion fails every test. It's not strategic, it's not justified and it's not in the community's long-term interest and for those reasons, I will not be supporting it tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Lund. Councillor Potter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I also oppose this increase that we're seeing up here from 1.38 hectares to 1.8 hectares. At its core, this amendment seeks to rezone 57 hectares of rural land for your... Sorry, rural land for urban purposes, including 1.85 hectares of commercial land in the south-east corner of the site. While the intention to support local growth is understood, the proposed expansion of the commercial area is neither strategically justified or economically sustainable. I am rather surprised to see this alternative motion when both the applicant's economic impact assessment and council's independent peer review clearly state that the commercial floor face, sorry, supportable within this area is between 1,000 and 1,200 square metres. Council officers, the independent consultants and the Department of Transport and Planning have consistently agreed that a larger area is not justified, given the limited local catchment. This increase would significantly oversupply the commercially disowned land relative to the expected population growth. It would not just be unnecessary, it would be counterproductive, drawing away trade from the existing neighbourhood centres and undermining the careful balance of the Trelgan Moorwell Growth Framework Plan. The plan designates this site as a neighbourhood activity centre intended to serve local daily needs, not to operate as a regional retail hub. The commercial 1 zone permits a broad range of uses from food and drink premises to offices, service stations and even hotels, many of which could be established without a planning permit. Expanding the land beyond what is needed for a modest neighbourhood centre risks unplanned and premature commercial sprawl, creating land use conflicts and placing pressure on infrastructure and nearby residential areas. Council's own housing strategy of 2019 emphasised the importance of balanced growth, not growth for growth's sake. Increasing the area from 1.38 to 1.8 hectares undermines that balance in prioritising commercial development beyond what is proven need without any demonstrated community or economic benefits. In summary, councillors, this amendment as it stands already provides sufficient capacity for a well-scaled neighbourhood centre consistent with strategic policies, supported by evidence and aligned with the long-term vision of Trelgan West. Expanding the commercial zone would contradict that evidence, invite overdevelopment and erode confidence in our planning system's integrity. So, I urge my fellow councillors to vote against this alternative motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Potter. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Gibson, you're reserved.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I hear what my fellow councillors have said and, yes, it all did come up to the motion in December, where we took the golf course out of the equation. Now, that was a wise move and I believe this is a wise move too. While I note the concerns, I don't agree with the concerns. Now, major supermarkets would not place their investment in areas that weren't going to work. Now, if it's not going to be viable, they wouldn't do it. If you look at the congestion and you look at some of the people who actually shop at Trelgan North, they won't shop in the CBD because when you try and shop at the supermarket, it is so congested. So, people are moving out of that equation. Now, there's another concern that it's not viable. Well, there's also a saying, build it and they will come. I suggest they will come quite well, not at the expense of other shops there, just at the convenience and the ease of being able to shop there. Now, with saying about justification, I don't know if we're reading the same thing or not because I believe that the reports we had showed the justification. So, I'm a bit... I don't know if we're reading the same thing or not, but I see it a bit different. Now, there was 1.35, I think it was, that was originally stated and it's 1.85, so it's not three times the amount. So, on balance, I believe this is a wise way forward and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, we've had speakers against, did you wish to close?
Yes, thank you. I would like just to state that in my research, some of the anecdotal evidence suggested that our local supermarkets were at more than 100% capacity. So, that's some of the things that I actually took into account, not just reading the 1,500 pages that we were supplied of all the planning reports. And I agree with my colleague, Councillor Gibson. I believe that in that 1,500 pages, there is the justification for the extra parcel of land. I also note that, I'm sure that you would all agree that I am very passionate about trying to, for businesses to thrive in our Latrobe City. I want us to be a place to do business and to thrive. I honestly believe that some of the reasons previous to this council, that we didn't get some of the businesses that we could have because we didn't have the right area for their staff to live. There are some businesses that their staff need to have local amenity, they need to be able to walk, ride to their local shops and that's one of the decisions that they make when they are deciding to come and do business with us. They need to have the available housing, the right housing, but they also need to have that area of the bicycle paths, to also go in with the renewable side of what we're trying to be, a livable area where we're a good place to do business. And by upping the amount and ensuring that we can get a full-line supermarket into that area... I hear what my colleagues are saying of the 1.38 and building a small IGA, but let's be realistic. Once you get a small IGA there, the chances are really slim of you being able to get a full-line supermarket in there. It just doesn't make sense for the developers that then change that. And then, that's not going to make the actual CBD in Trelgan a better area to shop because it's not taking the pressure off the local CBD. I really feel that this will be a good thing by having a full-line supermarket there. I don't believe that our documents have really taken into account that it's not just the potential residents that are going to live there, it's the catchment area that's already there. It's the Erin Park of approximately 360 residents that would... If I lived in Erin Park, I would actually drive to the new supermarket because I didn't have to drive into town and face the congestion and can possibly get a car park that is closer and quickly run into the shops. It doesn't take into account the hospital and the hospital staff there and the visitors there that already are there. And if there was a supermarket close, they would be able to eat... The visitors there visiting their loved ones in hospital would potentially be able to have healthier food options.
About ready to wind up, are you, Councillor Pugsley?
Yes. I believe that livability is important to be able to attract the type of businesses, opportunities that we will help, that will help Latrobe City evolve. Thank you.
Councillor Potter?
Just a question, please, Mr Mayor. Is there a supermarket guaranteed to be going into this space?
No.
Thank you.
Yep. Not in the plans, but that's up to the supermarkets to decide. Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Pugsley, sorry, bear with me. Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, those opposed. Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe. I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on to item 10, corporate items for discussion. There are two items in this section. The first item is 10.1, CEO delegation to award a contract for Gibson Indoor Regional Indoor Sports Stadium Stage 2 Regional Sports Infrastructure Programme, commencing on page 1,777. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson moving, Councillor Campbell, are you seconding? Councillor Campbell seconding. Councillors, do I have any opposition? No, Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Really, it's procedural.
Yep. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak?
No, all good, thank you.
Okay. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.2, recyclable bottles and can scheme. I noted you, Councillor Pugsley. Recyclable can scheme, commencing on page 1,782 of the agenda. And I noted you, Councillor Lund. Councillor Pugsley?
I'd like to move, thank you.
You're moving. Councillor Lund?
I'll second.
Seconding, Councillor Lund. Councillors, do we have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Just, yes, I would, thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move this item to undertake an expression of interest for not-for-profit community groups to collect their 10-cent recyclable cans and bottles from suitable council events for their fundraising interests and a future report about the community response to come back to a future meeting. This is something that I bought, had a report done right back at the start, I think it might have been February. This is something that I'm very passionate about. I feel like this gives community groups an extra fundraising avenue when fundraising is already tight. It's something that will stop cans from, if the groups are proactive enough, stop cans from going into the wrong bins and going to landfill. I think this is a great win for this if the community takes this up. So, I'm looking forward to a future report coming back about this. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Yeah, just to add on, the Victorian Container Deposit Scheme provides 10 cents refund for each eligible container and it's already proven a great way for community groups across the state to raise small but meaningful funds while helping the environment. Officers have looked closely at how this could work in Latrobe and while collecting from council facilities poses operational and safety challenges, there is a clear opportunity at major events where the environment is more controlled and where visibility for groups is greater. The experience of Moorwell Scout Group and the Rose Gutton Festival is a great example and it showed that the idea is feasible and adds a community benefit, even if the financial return is modest. By starting with an expressions of interest process, council can identify which community groups are interested, what capacity they have and how we can support them safely and fairly. It's a practical and low-risk first step before committing to a full programme. So, I'd encourage my fellow councillors to support this.
Thank you, Councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Campbell?
I think this is a great idea, being a recycler myself, as everyone knows in this room. And I just think it's great because the football clubs and the netball clubs right across Victoria have benefited greatly from this. have benefited greatly from this. There was $900 raised just on one day at a football match final recently, so I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, councillor Campbell. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we're up to item 11, which is urgent business. Councillors, do I have any motions for urgent business? No? Okay, we shall move on. Bear with me, councillors. We now move, sorry.
Can I request a short break?
Short break, you certainly can, councillor Potter. Councillors, at 7:09 we shall be back, and for those live streaming, back at 7:20. We'll see you then. Thank you. And welcome back, councillors. We now return from our break and move on to item 12, reports for noting. There are two items in this report, the first being item 12.1, presentation of the Audit and Risk Committee minutes 16th of September 2025, commencing on page 1,791. Councillor Potter, I note you, and councillor Campbell. Councillor Potter, you're moving.
Ah, yes, please, Mr Mayor.
And councillor Campbell, seconding?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Potter, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. The Audit and Risk Committee plays a really vital role in ensuring strong governance, transparency, accountability across all areas of council's operations. Meeting quarterly in accordance with its charter, the committee provides ongoing oversight of financial management, risk control and compliance, helping to safeguard the integrity of council's decision making. The December meeting covered a board of a range of important topics, including updates to the Victorian Auditor's General's Office, monitoring the internal audit program, review of our risk appetite and updates on the business continuity, fraud protection and compliance. It was also pleasing to see emerging issues like genitive AI policy and training being actively monitored, showing that our governance processes are keeping pace with the new and evolving risks. The committee's work, as reflected in the detailed minutes, demonstrate a disciplined and proactive approach to managing council's financial, operational and strategic risks. Their ongoing oversight ensures that our systems remain robust, transparent and aligned with communities' expectations. So thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak?
Yes, briefly. Through you, Mr Chair. I'd just also like to thank David, our chairperson. He asks all the right questions and keeps us on our toes, and I agree with everything my fellow councillors said. And it's great to be on that committee, actually. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Campbell. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote then. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare that motion moved unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item 12.2, tabling of Audit and Risk Committee biannual report, commencing on page, I note you councillor Potter, and I note you councillor Pugsley, and I note you councillor Campbell. Commencing on page 1,807 of the agenda, councillor Potter.
I'd like to move, please, Mr Mayor.
No worries. Councillor Pugsley.
I was actually going to second, but I'm happy to let councillor Campbell.
Defer to councillor Campbell, seconding?
Happy to second.
Yep, no worries. Thank you for that. Do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Potter, would you like to speak?
Pretty much what I just said for the last one, actually, Mr Mayor. Okay, I'll send them over. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Potter, appreciate that. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Campbell. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? We'll put it to the vote. Councillors, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to the items for tabling, of which there are none. So we move to closing of the public meeting. Under section 566 2A of the Local Government Act 2020, councillors, do I have a motion to conclude the open portion of the meeting and close the meeting to the public to consider confidential information? Councillor Gibson, I note you. Councillor Morgan, I note you. Councillor Pugsley, I note you. Councillor Gibson.
Happy to move.
Happy to move. Councillor Morgan.
Happy to second that.
Second, and councillor Pugley have to third that. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak? No. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak? Councillors, do I have any councillor wish to speak? Great, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move into the closed section of the meeting. To those joining us in the gallery, thank you for attendance tonight. To those watching online, thank you very much as well, and we look forward to catching up with you at our next meeting. Good night.